Good evening, Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission. This is a Chapter 99 blighting study and redevelopment plan for the 3838 Flora Place redevelopment area. The site is relatively small. It's about a tenth of an acre in size or so. It consists of a single parcel and is located in the 3800 block of Flora Place, roughly a block west of South Rain Boulevard. And I should point out that the site is also located in the Shaw Neighborhood Certified Local Historic District. The existing use is a vacant two-and-a-half-story, single-family home that is in poor condition. And the primary objectives of the redevelopment plan are to eliminate the blight on the property and to facilitate its redevelopment into a productive residential use. Unlike most redevelopment plans, this redevelopment plan was initiated by the Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority, or LCRA, at the request of Alderman Stephen Conway, who's the Alderman for the A-4. There is no prospective developer at this point in time. And again, unlike most redevelopment plans, this redevelopment plan does provide for the use of eminent domain. This is an aerial photo of the redevelopment area as well as the block between 39th Street and Spring Avenue. It's located on Flora Place, and as many of you know, Flora Place is one of the showcase neighborhoods, not only for the Shaw Neighborhood, but this outside as well. It extends six blocks from Grand on the east to Missouri Botanical Garden on the west, and it includes a wide, well landscaped median with large, single-family homes on both sides of the street. This is the front of the home. As you can see, it's two-and-a-half stories in size. It's about 3,000 square feet in space, so it's a pretty large home. It has a stone foundation, a brick exterior, and a large red tile roof. It's in a historic district. The building obviously is very architecturally and historically significant, but it's been vacant for five years, and it's in poor condition. And I'd like to document some of those building conditions now, starting from the first floor and moving on up. Here you can see the large crack in the front porch of the building. These photos are of the deteriorated cornices above the front porch. As you can see, some of the architectural trim is starting to fall apart at the corners there, and some paint is needed as well. These are the second-floor cornices. On the right, you can see a large crack in the corner. And on the left photo, you can see some vegetation in the gutter. The perhaps most serious problem with the building is the problem with missing and sliding roof tiles. As you can see, some of the roof tiles have slid down, and some of them have fallen down. The photo on the left shows two of those clay roof tiles that have fallen off the roof and have landed in the side yard. On the other side yard, on the opposite side of the building, you can see on the right, the down spot has been disconnected. This is a photo of the rear of the home. At one point in time, I understand that the garage was unsecured. It's since been taken care of. And I'll point out some of the details at the rear of the building. On the left, you can see again the problem with the roof tiles that are sliding down and falling off, and you can see the tall chimney there that is leaning, and that obviously can be a major safety hazard if that were to ever fall down. I think somebody will try to call in.
Can we formally open the meeting now?
Sure, let's go ahead.
Okay. Call meeting to order. Lyda Krusen, Alderman Krusen is on the phone with us. And could we have a roll, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Krusen?
Here, by phone.
Chair Stoudtner?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Jay?
Here.
Commissioner Spade?
Here.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Here.
And Commissioners Pinkston, Powers, and Alderman Cohn are not present.
Okay, and we have a quorum. We've been taking up item number four, Lyda, on the agenda, and we've just gotten into that presentation.
I'll continue on. We're looking at the rear of the property. I mentioned the leaning chimney. On the right, you can see some of the problems again with the cracked and missing roof tiles above the rear or back door there. These are some photos of the dormant windows above the second floor. On the left, you can see two of the windows are broken. On the right, the window is missing. In the blighting study, there was mention that some neighbors have seen pigeons flying in the building, as well as some raccoons have entered the building as well. So the interior probably isn't in the best shape.
Catherine would think that's urban wildlife.
Yeah. Urban wildlife.
In terms of adjacent properties, these are the two, single-family homes that flank the redevelopment area. And as you can imagine, they're not particularly happy with the situation. And in fact, Dick mentioned that a couple of the neighbors appeared at the LCRA meeting with Alderman Conway to report some of the conditions.
One of them can't use their patio because tiles have come off the house next door and crashed in. So they basically...
Are looking at this and can't use the patio.
The large photo shows the buildings across the street from Flora Place. In foreground is the Flora Place median. Upper photo shows the width of the median. And the photo at the bottom right shows the streetscape along the 3800 block of Flora Place. And just as a aside, I'll point out, I used to live a block to the east. And they have a great event that goes on Christmas Eve along Flora Place. The Flora Place Association, which is basically the homeowners' association, puts on an annual event on Christmas Eve where they have a luminarya and place lit candles 10 feet apart, the entire length of Flora Place, on both sides of the street, along the sidewalk. If you've never had a chance to go out there on Christmas Eve, I highly recommend it. It's a beautiful scene. In addition to those building conditions, many building code violations on the property date back to at least 2011. And many complaints have been issued to the Citizen Service Bureau or the CSB. The property owner has not been cooperative in correcting these issues. And the Alderman and the Housing Corporation and neighborhood group have been very active in trying to pursue this. In addition, property taxes have not been paid on the property since 2011. To comprehensively inventory all of these blighting issues, LCRA commissioned Development Strategies, a local consulting firm, to conduct a comprehensive blighting study for the property. It's a 40-page report that they completed. A complete copy of that blighting study is included with your Planning Commission resolution that inventories the various problems, not just in terms of building code violations, but also some of the economic problems and other issues dealing with blight. Basically, a summary of that blighting study is listed on that slide there. And it basically states that the redevelopment area for 3838 Flora Place is a blighted area as defined by the Missouri Revised Statutes. And I won't bother to read the summary there, but it's included in your Planning Commission resolution. It basically states again that this is a blighted property. The City Strategic Land Use Plan designates the redevelopment area as well as most of the Shaw Neighborhood as a neighborhood preservation area, which encourages residential preservation and improvement. The redevelopment plan is in conformity with the City Strategic Land Use Plan. It provides for the use of 10 years of tax abatement. That 10 years of tax abatement would be provided as a financial incentive to any prospective developer, prospective owner or developer, be that the current owner or a different party. Again, unlike most redevelopment plans, this redevelopment plan is providing for the use of eminent domain, and staff is recommending approval of the blighting study and redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for any of the commissioners?
With the taxes being not paid, doesn't LRA have rights to take it at this point?
No.
No? Not yet. Tell them the scenario, the number of years.
Well, it's a four-year cycle, but they've been paying the oldest taxes as they come around, so it never quite gets into tax sale.
They pay four-year-old taxes every year.
Have to be in arrears for four years. They make sure they never get to that threshold.
So any buyer or developer picks up that tax liability?
Yes.
And they have not put the property officially on the market for sale?
Correct.
So what this will do is going to in fact force a sale if the developer makes that.
It will. One, the city's problem properties team has been trying to goose them along. This, as you may know, is under an acre, but we've brought it to you because of what you just noticed, is that eminent domain is included. We rarely do that. And I'll let David and Roman tell me if I got this wrong, because they're the ones that will be studying this, is once the redevelopment plan is in place, it will provide for the 10 years of tax abatement. It will provide for the use of the eminent domain exercised by LCRA. LCRA will advertise for developers, and the owner can apply to be a developer. And if they sign the redevelopment agreement saying that they'll do it per the standards that they wanted to restore it back to health, they can execute that redevelopment agreement. They can continue to own it, and they could indeed be eligible to receive the tax abatement for that. When they advertise, other developers could also seek to develop it, knowing that if they're the selected developer, they could either negotiate with the property owner and acquire it, or know that the threat of eminent domain is hanging over, and LCRA could implement eminent domain and award it to the developer to fix it, if they're trying to develop. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Two out of three votes got to get that right. So as...
Yeah, I guess, you know, obviously if they get the tax abatement and all that, is there a neighborhood architectural code for that area? So like, for example, the tile on the roof, you know, will they be required to...
It's in the district.
They start districts. So the tile, they wouldn't be able to go in there and put asphalt chingles and all that sort of stuff?
And I assume that nobody was able to get inside, see the conditions?
I certainly wasn't able to, nor was the consulting firm that prepared the blighting study.
Because of that.
So there's no structural assessment that tortures separating there?
But remember, to be blighted doesn't necessarily need to mean that you're condemned.
Right.
Any other questions?
Second?
Been moved and seconded that we approved the blighting study and find it in conformity with the strategic plan. Any other questions? Could you read the roll, please?
Alderwoman Krusen?
Aye.
Chair Stoudtner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Thank you. So one of the things is, A, we pulled that out of the stack of under an acre because of what we're doing, finding the blight and approving the redevelopment plan with eminent domain. Roman tracked down, there's only been one other, or is this the only one of this year that LCRA has done on their own initiation?
There's been one of them.
So most of the time, we see it's a reaction to a developer. This is the city's using its powers to do that. Do that. Thank you for your attention.
I'd like to go back and pick up the approval of the minutes from the November 5 meeting. And this arrived way ahead of time, so thank you very much.
The thanks go to Dick and Roman.
So moved and seconded that we approved the minutes as distributed to us from the November 5 meeting. Any corrections, additions? You mean none? Could you read the roll, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Krusen?
Aye.
Chair Stoudtner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Okay, and we'll go back to item number three, which is the other agenda item.
This is initiation of zoning district amendment. Majority of the amendments we see are petitions, but this one is, we're asking the Planning Commission to initiate this. There was a request from Alderman, Alderwoman Phillips Young of South Florida to do a study of this LaSalle Park neighborhood. And Mary Burton and myself have been studying this. And there's 10 city blocks involved, there's 47 parcels. And it's Park Avenue between Tucker on the west and Interstate 55 on the east, and also along Tucker from LaSalle on the south, Carroll on the south to LaSalle on the north, here in the LaSalle Park neighborhood. Most of these are downzoning from commercial, either G or H, or this is split zones that have commercial and residential. And there's some parcels along Interstate 55 that are zoned industrial, and also adjacent to those are some parcels in the rideaway that have no zoning. The downzoning of this area reflects the existing land uses, and it creates no non-conforming uses and only five conditional uses. So usually when we talk about these things, you know, we have to go through the list of who's not going to be allowed there. If there are no non-conforming uses, then there's only five. And I'll show you some examples of that. So the existing zone, it's G, local commercial and office district along Park Avenue. Tucker is H area, commercial district. You might remember we rezoned to single-family, the newer houses to the west, it was P. And some of there's some areas that are jointly D and either G or H. And then there's industrial zoning on these vacant parcels that are open space along Interstate 55. And of course, there's no zoning on the rideaway itself. But there is some developable areas of that rideaway, and it's listed by the assessors' office as a residential law. The proposed zoning is for all of this area, D, multiple family dwelling district, and basically the almost entire neighborhood with NBC, which of course allows single-family, two-family, fairly dense, multiple-family, and corner commercial, first floor commercial. These are Exhibit B, which shows every parcel in the area, the owner of record, the current use, and current zoning, proposed zoning. Of course, it's all D on the proposed. And then you can see there's a list of no's, that there is no non-conforming uses. There's also some asterisks that show where there's some conditional uses. I've kind of repeated them on the left over here. The same, there's a church school and parsonage, but only the school will need a conditional use in it. And I'm not aware that they have an elementary school there, but if they do, they need to get a conditional use. At 911 Park Avenue, there's the SA Brooks and Associates. It's an insurance office on the first floor of a mixed-use building, which there's several along Park. Just down the street at 941 Park is the Criminal Justice Ministry. It's a first-floor social service office, also in a mixed-use building. And then further down the street at 1017 through 27th Park, it's here at all community services. That's a homeless service office building, I believe was originally a grocery store. And the parking lot would also, that's the fifth parcel, that would need a conditional use for office use. This is the photographs, they're also in the resolution. Great Leisure Park is located in the western portion, south of Park Avenue, Tucker. And I think most people are familiar with the 12th and Parker Recreation Center, which is in Great Leisure Park. Just to the north is the LaSalle Baptist Church, and north of that, along Tucker, is Mestries Park, which is basically an open space along the west side of LaSalle Park neighborhood. This is Tucker and Park, once again, going east from Tucker to 10th Street. Kingdom House Church is located here. They also are the owners of the here-in-all community services offices, which are located here on the outside of Park. The east of there, the parking area shown in this slide, and the St. Raymond Apartments, fairly large apartment complex, is to the north. And this building right here is the Society of Friends in their parking lot in the front of Park. If we go further east, St. Vincent's Church, School, and Parsonage are located in the southern portion, south of Park. And on the north side is a row of single-family houses and a couple of mixed-use buildings, corner buildings, that we talked about as being conditional uses. At the far eastern portion of the neighborhood, and this area is Zone J Industrial, there's three single-family residences on South 9th. And there's a wooded area, this area, and also this grassy open space area, are both owned by the LaSalle Park Redevelopment Corporation. But it serves as open space. And you can see it's fairly densely wooded. This is 9th Street, right here. And if you drive up the alley, this is your view of the woods to the right here. And then further along, there's firms that flock the view from the houses to the aisles. In the vicinity of the area, it's mostly single-family and also apartments facing the rezoned areas. There's a row of single-family houses that face Kingdom House. They actually back up to Park Avenue. You see their garages and alley. To the east of Leisure Park are single-family homes. To the west of Leisure Park is apartment buildings on the corner and also single-family houses. And then that area that was rezoned a few years ago is single-family houses that face Mestries Park. The Strategic Land Use Plan is neighborhood preservation area, and also there's adjacent park and open-space land and institutional uses. And there is one area of business-industrial preservation, but it actually is used for open space. Everything agrees with the rezoning. This area probably is one that we'll look at the next time we update the SLUPE. It should probably be in the open space category. The proposed downzoning of LaSalle Park's SCADER site from commercial, industrial, and dual uses to residential affects the SLUPE's support of its existing residential uses and compatible nodes of commercial, institutional, or park uses. Staff finds the proposed zoning in conformity with the neighborhood preservation area. And in the zoning administrator's letter, Mary stated the purpose of this was to downzone all of these parcels to protect the existing and future residential and commercial uses. And in the interest of protecting those current and future developments, she is appropriate to rezone this area to D, multiple-family dwelling district. Mary and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
So before, the previous plan seemed to want to encourage potential retail along commercial, along Tucker. So by doing this action, will preclude that from happening in the future?
Right. And the, I mean, there's also, it was zoned up a lot, so a lot of the residences along Park, you know, you could put commercial businesses in. And so this will limit commercial uses to first floor, typically the corner, mixed-use buildings. And the only commercial building there is a one-story building, so it would be a conditional use in the first floor use.
Most of the property along Tucker itself is city-owned.
City-owned park. And also institutions. So this is protective of what's there and doesn't allow, I guess, the kind of density they were seeing in 1950 that you indeed...
Who's initiating this?
We're asking the Planning Commission to do it.
What's that?
Alderwoman Young asked us to do the study, and we're asking the Planning Commission to initiate this and recommend it to the board of Alderman.
Was Alderwoman Young's idea, but the legal initiation is yours?
And you may remember about three years ago, Alderwoman, we also did a study, Roman and Mary did, in Sular. So I mean, this is basically cleaning up the map and getting it to reflect the existing condition and the city's plan.
Any other questions? Been retained a motion to find the amended zoning in conformity with the strategic plan use plan, initiate it and recommend it to the Board for approval?
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions? Could you read the roll, please?
Aye.
Chair Stoudtner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chairman, that will find its way in the report bill. Alderwoman Young will introduce it when she's prepared to do so.
I'm sorry.
Mary's team will do the posting. It's a pretty large area, but the posting, why don't you describe how the posting gets done?
It's usually a combination of myself and some of our staff, and we go out and we are required to post each city block, two postings, but we usually post more than two, particularly if there are one city block.
Posting the public hearing, you take photos of the...
Right. We take photos of everyone who's facing the posting, signs and affidavits, and then we have all that information in file and committee meetings in the public hearing.
I bring that up because the two items you did tonight, because of the nature that we talked about, this is an initiation. The LCRA thing began with them, but we need to find the blight and approve that. Both of these would be the types of things that we might find our ways defending ourselves in court. So we're being particularly careful about... So we're being particularly careful about that. And second is, these would not happen without your activities. Thank you.
So does this come back to us after it's gone through all that, or is it the last we see of it?
This is the last we see. The public has, the public hearing is at the Board of Alderman.
We've got seven additional under one acre, 799s. Any questions? And there's one street vacation. Any questions?
And we meet next on January 7th. And Dick, help me, we're going to have something we haven't done in a while. We'll be looking at an appeal request from Dave Visentainer's other job, the Preservation Board. And remember that, we get rusty on that, it's a two-step. Is one, they have to ask us, do we want to do the appeal? And you have the chance to say yes or no. And if it's no, they go through how everybody else would do it, is either live with a solution or go to court. And if we say yes, then we go to subsequent meetings and review it all. We might also have a street name change in January. Anything else interesting and different?
Not so far.
Okay. So anyway.
Rose Street. Road Drive.
They thought they could do the whole name, Down Road Drive.
So I wouldn't bet the house on that being the name, but that might be the hint for where the geography is. The name we will...
Can you just illuminate, just one question?
Sure.
These, Captain and I've already studied redevelopment on the one acre. I assume that somebody is scrutinizing those for the blight, because I mean, I think we just sort of pass over them every month. And I assume somebody is scrutinizing those for, what we're doing is we're sort of nodding that they're agreeing.
I attend the LCRA meeting, and they present everything. They present the under an acre ones much as they do in the open.
And you...
So I see that, and we get to the resolution. So, and for being at the meeting, I tend to know, you know, some of the details.
And so these are Dick's write-ups. These aren't just, so Dick ultimately studies each one and writes it off. And so these under an acre ones, you've heard me talk about, not the biggest fan of that being redevelopment of an area, it's getting an incentive.
Mostly low-down to the residential.
So the...
I think it's building.
So the reception that you saw tonight, and Roman's detailed look at that as we pulled it off, happens to be that wanted the full vote because we might go to court. And the blighting study was in the order of $3,000 to have conducted.
And just so you know for a formality, the Planning Commission delegated that authority to the Planning Director in 1999.
So there's...
No reason you would remember that, but it was done formally by the Board.
Okay.
Any new business?
Nope.
Anything else? Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
No need for an executive session?
Thanks to Lita for joining us by phone.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for allowing me to.
Lita isn't witnessing the two nice holiday sweaters that her other mom...
Oh, good. I entertain a motion for a dismissal.
The move.
Then moved and seconded all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Lita.